Thank you all for joining us tonight. We have special guests here. We're excited to have you with us and we'll get right to it. So is there anybody here for public input? Anybody here for public input? Seeing none, amendments to the agenda. I have one under consent agenda. Under item C, I'm sorry, item D, appointment. Let's pull that off the, excuse me, consent agenda. And also add item E, appointment to the cemetery board.
We're pulling D off or moving it?
We're pulling them off the consent so we can handle them separately. And recognize at that time. Any other changes or amendments to the agenda?
We need to add executive session to discuss matters related to real estate under item 10.
Everybody heard that, executive session? Any? No other changes? Okay. Does that take a motion to change the agenda? Thank you. We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Moving into the mayor's report, quickly, the August meetings, please be sure to look at those, council members, be present of any of those that you can, support our committees. Still looking for people to be on certain committees. Please look at the list, it's being updated this week, I believe, again and that. So look at it out in the drop box and if you have ideas for those particular areas, please let myself know or the Greggy the One or Jerry, she's also involved in those at that time. So there are several areas that we'd like to get people appointed to and, you know, get those committees spolied. The Kansas League of Municipalities is coming up in October, 8th and 9th in Overland Park. I don't know if anybody's had a chance or if there's any interest at all, if you look at your calendars, on the 8th and the 9th of October. 8th, 9th and 10th. Please check your calendars. See if you can make that event and let us know. How soon do we have to register for that? By the next meeting?
It'd be nice because it's September and I think we have rooms reserved because we have to do that by February 1st. We need at least a three days.
By the next meeting, please come with a yes or no as to whether you'll be attending that.
Will you tell me the day?
October 8th to the 10th. And is there any? It's in Overland Park.
I will. I have a date.
Alright. Item B is Viking the Sweets Scholarship recipients. Call upon Matt Fanskill, Dean of Admissions and Financial Aid, and the four recipients to come forward on the map. Start us and then I believe each recipient will visit with us.
Yeah, I bet. So thank you for having us and certainly excited to be recognizing these students for the first time. And when I called the students and said, hey, you're gonna have to go in front of council to be recognized, they were pretty nervous, but I told them that they had the feeling. So I'll have them get to it and we'll start with Stephen.
Hi, Stephen Flossom. I'm a sophomore at Bethany Home with a pre-med major. Thank you so much for the participation.
I'm Caitlin Adams, I'm a freshman and I'm going to be a freshman graduate. My major is elementary education and the U of K.
Hi, I'm Carrie Hinni, I'm a freshman and I'll be majoring in English. Thank you so much for the participation.
I'm Katie Flossom, I'm going through chemistry and I'll be playing orchestra at my major.
Very good. So these four students, they met the Viking the Sweets requirements big time and they were loved. And we're excited to have them. Caitlin's checking in tomorrow, we've got about 250 kids checking in tomorrow. Paul Ashley's checking tomorrow, so we're pretty excited. Yeah, yeah. And then the rest of them will check in on the 21st. 21st and then Stephen will come back for sophomore on the 23rd. So Stephen, we picked on Stephen a lot at the college. He's involved in student ambassadors and he sits on parent panels and so does a nice job. Thanks so much, certainly appreciate it. Do you guys have any questions for the students?
Council members, any questions?
Which one of you is doing the five-minute presentation? I'm Katie Flossom.
Well, we're very excited to do, this is our first year at the scholarships and that, and we're very excited and congratulations to you four for meeting the requirements and joining the Sweets up there and returning, you know, to the Sweets community and that. We're excited to support Bethany and to support you and your endeavors and your educational future and that. So. We have several pictures that we'll be taking, the city, the paper and the college. So what we'd like to do is have the four recipients stand in the middle, council members, we'd like you to join them on either side.
We gotta bring the chairs over.
Did you get everybody that way? Council members, we have to double up if we're not there. Council members, double up. How we doing, everybody? Thank you very much, appreciate it. Next item will be from the Lindborg Swedish Folk and Dancers, a presentation from their trip. Please come forward and Linda, you're the leading one. Move wherever you want.
No, this is the one from the back. I know it's that one. We're ready to begin.
We're not quite there yet. Sticking longer than that.
Hi, we're at this Lindborg Swedish Folk and Dancers. I'm Olivia Anderson and I'm the co-director. And I had a really good following with these, there are 40 students and 12 sponsors, so there were 52 of us on this tour. We got some quite large fanfare for the whole trip around for two weeks. We wanted to just share with you, just to say thank you for always supporting the Swedish dancers and our effort to be ambassadors, not only between the city of Lindborg and Munkers, but also between, you know, Zensborg and the little Swedish who has like a speech and the heritage that we carry. And that is our motto and the Swedish dancers is to be able to carry on that heritage, the customs and traditions. We came to go once every four years, I don't know if that's high school year, so like I said, this last summer was the trip for this last group. So I have with me what we called our travel log committee. We formed this before we even went on the trip. It was about 10 people that volunteered to take special pictures, to be able to do presentations like this. They did raise up different highlights of different parts of our trip that we will chronologically put together for future reference and for maybe more presentations. So they've been working hard, we met her several times at the Vision Tech. They were so gracious to let us see them there and work there as a group. So again, just to say thank you. And we'll start it off by showing you.
Linda, when you first start off, like introducing who's on that?
Yes.
Do you have any of you would?
We have Monica Peterson. We have Elise Nelson. We have Morgan Vanderwood. Julia Wilson. And Caitlin Anderson.
Thank you.
We have one senior, one junior, two juniors and two freshmen. Okay, we must start off, most of you unsure where I'm speaking. Sorry guys, I'm bad. But as you know, we always travel the lower third of the country. So this is where we started. We started in Stockholm. Well, first we flew over, we came from Iceland air, we flew into Stockholm. Then we went to our fine city, Munkers. Then we went up to Mora. Then we went down to the Fallen area. Then we headed on a six-hour trip, we went further to Gårdberg. Just somewhere in the skull right there. Then we went down to Denmark, we were down there. Then we came back up to Lindshoem. Then we went to Stockholm. So all of that, two weeks. Just two weeks. And this is just a few pictures, I can't tell you how many pictures we probably had of the whole trip. But we'll just share some pictures that they put together, so. Um, being able to see what we've always known and what we've grown up with, we had to see other groups dance. And that was a big part of our trip since we're the Swedish folk dancers. And we did a lot of sharing of dances, which was, it was more casual. And then we would just kind of teach some dances as they suggested. This is the national performances. So we learned so much from those groups and just being able to see their heritage and also us being able to share our heritage. So some of the places we performed were at the Munkers Midsummer Festival and a retirement home there. We danced, sang and fiddled at the Sudoche Church's Midsummer Service and performed at the Zora Museum in Mora. Mora's Midsummer Festival, which was also another place that we danced at, as well as Wisconsin Open Air Museum in Stockholm, the Open Air Museum in Lake Hurley. And we were able to share dances with the dance group from Roskilde, Denmark, Utsula, Sweden and Stockholm. And the dance group from Stockholm had a very similar to their area where they danced because they actually danced and practiced on an island during the summer that they own. And they call it their summer retreat home, which is in Archipelago Island. This dance group has ties to Charlotte and its grandfather. And we got to see Sarah and Emma Anderson and Jonathan while we were over on the island. Being tourists was a big part of our trip. We got to experience the whole deal and watch ourselves get better and now we can learn from the tourists and studying what to do at the time when we were there. Without all our learning experiences, it would not have been amazing trip that it was. Unless we know that we flew, rode a bus, walked, we walked across over 80 miles, which is over 300 kilometers. We ran, rode a boat, took the metro, covered over Stockholm, the Red Ball, rode bicycles, enjoyed carnage, danced the street, we'll find many, many stairs. There are too many stories to tell around the time to tell, but you are some of the tourists often made along the way. In Stockholm, we went to Gårdberg Slå, which is our old town, and then to the new town, we did Skyview. We went to City Hall, we went to the Palace and the Chamber of Stars there in Archipelago Island. Outside of Stenmark up to Sweden, we went to Nils Olsson's Timbroy, the famous river canal in Slå. And then in Denmark, we saw Gårdberg Castle, Stråket, Kristiania, Spreetown, Simley Garden, and the beach park, Church of Marsaker. And then Iceland, we toured right there in Sorge City and up to their popular and other historical locations. Okay, we're traveling from country to country, city to city. We could definitely see change in architecture. In the older towns, in the older town areas, quote unquote, in the Stockholm, there wasn't much of a difference because they had that older feel to it. The shops and restaurants were all placed together and most of the links, if not all, were done with soap. They were all placed in small halls and out, and strict separating. You could also see differences in people and churches in each country. I would like to compare the Utsula Cathedral to the Utsula in Iceland because they're both so different. The famous church in Iceland, the... It's a long word. It's a very long word. It's all the Hallbrunnen Skirra. And this church was finished in nineteen eighty. It has a very basic structure with a smooth exterior and it's very simple inside. While the Utsula Cathedral has a very detailed outside of it. It has more complex structure. But some of the architecture changed throughout the time period and working over. In Denmark, one was renovated to the Denloch, which is a Danish national garden. From the outset, you could certainly see modern architecture with English flair. Natural resources. Some of the different natural resources that we saw were the length of water and trees and how they use water for things such as channels, which here is never seen. We also watched glassware, which we got to see in the Colesvoda glass factory. Copper, which was at the Fallen copper mine, farming with drilling, which people decided in the water and hot springs were surrounded almost all the way. We got the opportunity to go to many museums and much of them were also outdoor, open-air museums. We got to learn about different Swedish traditions, lives in different times and simply watch history play before us. The museums are some of the most informative places we went to learn about Swedish culture and our heritage. The museum tours that we were able to go to included the Utsula Cathedral, Wisconsin's Open Air Museum, Munkers' Ransadar Homestead Village, the Shippings Open Air Museum, Univarken, the North Museum, Abyss Museum, Sweden's Palace, the Carl Larsson Museum and of course, the Vossen Museum. One of our stops that we did get to share some time with, it was with Munkers, of course. We were there for the Midsummer performance. During the time that the group was performing, Haley and I had the opportunity to meet with the mayor and the illustrator to have a luncheon that they usually have. I think she appreciated for that last time she went. But they just have about 50-some people come for this luncheon that they have and then it's followed by the traditional opera that they put on. And it's an opera that of course is all Swedish, it lasted about halfway through. I sat through the whole thing. But it was very enjoyable, again, even though I didn't understand the language, the lady that sat by us was very informed, she kind of tells. So basically, it's the traditional opera, the Romeo and Juliet, Juliet plot, set in the Midsummer scene with a fairy tale and it looked happily ever after in English. So again, for drama people, that was kind of one thing. But like I said, Haley and I got to sit with the mayor and the other illustrator and we got to converse with them. And of course, Rödiga was our very awing connection. And in fact, she just emailed me last week, what are the cars for, and everything, so we emailed her back. We did give them their gifts that you sent to them and they said, thank you very much. And they also did give you guys a gift in return, there's some information up ahead.
Can we all do that now?
Yes, you can.
Accessories and...
Is that Swedish?
Greetings from Sweden, Lindborg, USA, with our sculpture Gin Bird. It's a description.
I think yes, I'm on the bottom of it.
Yep, he does. Thank you very much for taking ours there and then bringing them back. So Freddie, greetings from Ardena.
I also wanted to tell you that the gentleman on the right, he was a representative, a Swedish representative of the Swedish Council of America, which they were so generous in giving us some grant money. So we were very appreciative of that and I just wanted to be able to show them and to let the Swedish Council of America know in the United States that we did this meet and that we did see each other. I wanted to tell you too that they were so very hospitable there. Rödiga just did an excellent job in everything. And I think one of our greatest places that we stayed was overlooking Munkers at the Boy Scout camp and all that, all stuff like that. But one thing that you might know about Munkers right now is that because of all the refugees that are coming in, Rödiga could not buy like a regular hotel or anything like that for us to stay at. That's why she did send this to the Boy Scout camp, which is about 10 minutes away, which was very fine. But the refugees, because of their influx in there, the government has had to go and buy up like all the hotels, even the name of the town is a Karl, Karl?
Karlstad?
Karlstad, even in Karlstad, the government has had to go buy up hotels and then they have to house these refugees there. So there are no hotels available in a lot of those small towns and towns with refugees. Some of our most memorable experiences, especially the flight, airport, bus ride, the hospitals, to Munkers, Olden Hill, the Waterfall, to Stockholm, we took the Volkevärskäst, we spent, Stockholm, the ride ended up, and we took the Rödiga. For our tour this year, we just traveled Icelandic air. It offered a less expensive airline ticket and also created an opportunity to visit Iceland for a 24-hour day over. We were able to experience three different international airports. All of which had their own frozen con along with their own style of RV. So we decided, we were about to say that all 50 of us managed to move to the airport even when we had our gate changed three times twice. Our hospital did another experience. Our Utsula had compared to California, which is far aside and not many people, which was about four people per room. Total difference was that a couple of passengers were inspected with the ones who were in the ward. The favorite also of the Utsula was the Munkers Boy Scout camp. They offered a mobile and a machine and it started to be a mess for us and taught us how to play 18, many games. I just wanted them to share the food, maybe that they liked, because that's been, we've been able to take our presentation, we did it on the one at Bethany Home and at the French, we French group. And of course, one of the big questions is what kind of food we have. So I just thought if they'd want to share a little bit about food or work in London, talk about food.
It was an interesting exposition this week because it was, the most were really healthy and small portions, but then also there was ice cream everywhere. I don't think, I don't think it's considered a full day if you didn't have ice cream. I mean, all through that, we had sandwiches, they're all good. I love the breakfasts that we got at our hospitals. And it's similar, but we have like a Swedish country in here. I never had Swedish meatballs. I ate Swedish pancakes once. And other than that, small sandwiches, very good, really very good ones. It was awesome.
I think the biggest difference was breakfast because here, we have the cereal and like the donuts and the fresh toast, all the sweets are there, sandwiches with like tomatoes and cheese and I mean, the sweet seem to help out a bit with the peanut. So there's a big difference in my heart comparing to breakfast. They're very healthy, but very delicious.
Again, we thank you and greetings from Munkers to the council and to the Sweets. Thanks.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions for them? What did you say, Italian?
No, she did not say anything. We did have one, she said that the bathroom was much like that, I'm like, her, four times the size, which is kind of good. No.
Did you have no hosting over there?
Yeah, no.
No hosting?
But the dance groups that we met were just really, really very, very welcoming. She always provided food and meal or something. And so, just very supportive, very supportive. We showed them the air museum, they took extra courtesy and welcomed us, showing us around. They all. Utsula, you know, we had some of those connections from the Utsula Choir that helped here last time. So that was always a good connection there, so.
Did you go to New York?
I went in 74, my very first group that went.
Oh great, did you go?
I would not have did.
But I hear that Greg's never been to Sweden. That was brought up in the discussion going through the wonderful buffet line at the Munkers dinner.
Did you ride a Lindbergh bus again?
Yes, we did, I believe it's Thomas.
Thomas was out there. You see Thomas's son golf, he did.
I see Thomas's son on golf.
David Lindbergh, so you see the name of Thomas's son.
Let's just say that Thomas really spoke. He was a very, he's a tourist, attraction type of guy, whereas... Whereas it's hard to interpret him as a good person, Thomas, which he was used to. But, but very fine travels unless it's great. Agnes was our bus driver toward the end. And he, we ended up giving him a football, was a favorite of mine. Or you have, can you football?
Yeah, they're pretty cheap.
My husband went along, so he knew the guys needed things to like football, you know, that kind of stuff. And so he had taken that on a short season, but now I'm going back home. So, so you know, the guys came up with the idea, "Let's deflate it. We'll give it to Agnes, the bus driver, and he has a grandson. So they all signed it and gave it to him. And he, he literally, at first time, at the end, he said, "Why?" So he, I think he did admit it at the beginning, he did not always go all the way around on our schedule that we had, but he did great, so whatever.
It's one of us.
One of us.
Seeing boots?
Some people, I thought, did.
So when we were on the bus, one of our leaders, Becky, she really wanted to see a boots. So she told the guys, she was like, "I'll give you a pencil stick if you find me a boots when we're going through the forest." So we'd be going, and the guys would just be shouting boots all the time. And then one of the times, the guys actually thought they saw one. So she didn't get to see it, but the guys did. So that was just a glimpse, but that's beautiful.
If you find some new boots, there's a famous chocolate ball that's covered in coconut. So that's really a good tree place. Maybe we'll be made a souvenir. Anyway, thank you.
Well, thank you all for your contribution and presenting and being the great ambassadors that you are for our work. Or if you don't resent it.
And we're glad we got to meet the gentleman that he always does business with at Will's Holson, which we're daily in together. So he was like, "Oh, I do..." No, I have connections with the... I said, "Let me go get his daughter." We've got his daughter here, so he was excited to see one. We saw lots of friends working for it. Even people that had been students, exchange students even better than him. So it was, he was the end.
Good.
He was one of the people.
Well, again, thank you for being great and being able to start a meeting. Thank you. Moving on to the consent agenda, what is your desire?
Would you approve?
Been moved and seconded.
Okay, now I got the new.
Kelly, correct. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both, same sign. Thank you very much. Real call, please.
Ellen, yes, Dave, yes, Lane.
Yes.
Yes.
Cory.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Approved for the second time. Item D, an appointment, Tim. And your appointee. D, and your appointee. We are starting a new MC class tomorrow. And we have nine new members hopefully that will be joining us. But in the meantime, Brent here is just leaving the testing in fact. So I'm asking some council to bring Brent as well to the ENS.
Motion to approve.
Second. Been moved and seconded. Brent, you want to say anything?
Sure feels good to pass.
Congratulations for that. That's a wrap.
Appreciate the city, help us out with the funding of that. So I'm going to try to give you two good years of my service and hopefully beyond that, too. But I spent a bunch of bliss for, oh, when I come back to Penn, about twenty-some years ago, I was going to do it. So getting a little older now and my career's changed a little bit. I'm comfortable. I'm in trouble, I guess.
Well, we're excited to have you join. And once the council picks a vote and you have it, we, it is appreciated of all the community members the work that is done by the ENS here, so. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. We're getting a picture with you. Tim, you want to go in?
Everything's been falling down.
In this way, you're up. Okay, miss.
One, two, four. Three, two, zero.
You have a change.
I'd be as an appointment to the cemetery board of Richard Kurtz. Is there a motion? Is there a second? It's been moved and seconded. Richard could not be here with us tonight. I had talked to Richard. He expressed interest in looking and visiting about it. This is a motion, so. Motion out there, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both, same sign. Thank you very much. P and Z? No items for P and Z. Old business, I see none. New business, we have a team budget.
Distributed to you is the 2017 closed budget. The area was in six blocks this evening. We received no public input. The, I can't remember the exact number off the top of my head. Looking at milli increase, what is it, point nine-five-three-millions, ninety?
Nine-five-one.
Nine-five-one.
Four, not nine-five-one.
Yes. So less than one milli increase. The driver of that is in the bonded interest fund. We are in process of refunding a bond and also issuing store water drainage improvement debt. And so it's an increase in debt service. One of the things from the, from a budgeting requirement statutory, if you increase more than the Midwest CPI, you have to, one, adopt a resolution. And two, publish a note in paper of how the budget was voted on. But this, and the CPI that we got to use was point one-two-five percent. Not one-point-two-five percent, point one-two-five percent. We did exceed that threshold. So we did have to adopt a resolution for, publish notes in the paper of voting that there was an increase due to going beyond that threshold. Beyond that, if there are any questions, I would be happy to answer.
Can we get a motion?
I hope that we accept the 2017 budget as presented by the city administration.
Do we have a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded at this time. Are there questions of Greg or Larry? Or this third?
I think that should be, you adopt the budget rather than just accept it.
Okay.
Because it is an action of the council rather than just receiving.
Adopt. Seconded. Who's seconded?
Well, I can only find four. I wrote down Greg.
So adopt is all right with their...
Yes.
Thank you, Bill. Forty years of experience about that. So the word is adopt out there. Are there questions for Greg or Larry?
I wanted to end because I just like to make a comment. And that is, I am continually impressed by the quality of these kind of presentations. And we all know how much work goes into this tremendous. But I think this is a first-rate publication and I would commend you.
I like the transparency of it. It's easy to read. You don't need to be an accountant to do this. Maybe, maybe I can look at this and understand what's going on.
Perhaps, I'll go along.
Any other questions, council members? Real call, please.
Seagull?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Cory?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Lane?
Yes.
Betty?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Motion carried. Item ten.
Ms. Mayor, I'm moving you into executive session for ten minutes to discuss matters related to the purchase of real estate and to include the city attorney and city administrator and return at seven-twenty. Second.
Been moved, seconded. All of the members say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Thank you. Tim, you, time to force. All right, so we turn to the agenda. Item number eleven. Recreation.
With the pool season ending, just yesterday, I thought I would share with you all tonight just some of our 2016 pool season stats that I've been able to put together today. For the most part, across the board, we saw increases on just about everything, which is great. Days open this year, we had about seventy-eight days that we were able to be open and have people come in, which is about two more than what we had the year before. Our average member of daily visits this year was sixty-nine. And individually, it was about five thousand three hundred and forty-nine people came through the doors this year. The average number of member daily visits was sixty-eight. And that came to five thousand three hundred and one members. Actually, that figure is actually staying in the past three years, which is kind of interesting. And the number of private parties this year, we had thirty-five. And that was four more than what we had last year. And then our season passes sold. We have a family season pass and a single season pass. We mostly just sell the family season passes, which this year we had sixty-seven. And that was sixteen more than in 2015. And then we had about fifteen single memberships. And then we also have our daily swim passes, which is our ten punch card, our twenty punch card. This year, we had seventy-four pool combined that were purchased. And that's twenty-two more than what we had in 2015. That came to about seventeen for the ten punch pass and fifty-seven for the twenty punch pass. So it's going to be a lot more popular than the ten pass. And then it just doesn't know what we did for this season anyway. We increased our admission rate from two-fifty to three dollars for the daily rate. And we also did increase our price for all our specials that we have out there. And then looking forward into 2017, we will be increasing all of our season passes, our daily swim passes, and then we will be increasing the rates on pool parties as well. Any questions?
It's okay. Would that be a one-thirty-seven average? You said sixty-nine, sixty-eight. Is that what? So the daily average in the pool would have been about a hundred and forty people?
Yeah.
And when is the season over?
The season was officially over yesterday. But we have some of our, a couple of high school sport teams and one from Bethany that are using the pool for some water workouts. And we're also hosting a party for the football, Bethany football team on Friday. So we're hoping to be hosting, but otherwise they just don't.
Are you splitting the yards and all that for those items?
Yes.
Have there been any consideration to doing what Salina does? And that's the day before you enter the pool, you invite patrons to bring their dogs to play water?
I think that'd be great again.
Me too.
I really do. I do my walk with each other, but...
We go over here to Salina. I think that's a neat community thing. And the place is packed.
I think it'd be great again.
Cory, you look stunned.
I've been intrigued, yes. Just thinking what the pool's going to be like. The weather and so is the pool. And Salina says it's a lot cleaner than having people in it.
Yeah. Except for all hair, that isn't the point, but...
I think it'd be fun to have, as a season ending thing.
Yeah.
Okay, what that is a motion?
Next case. Carrie?
My dog would sink. Fact is, I've been working pretty hard on the stormwater utility parcel analysis. My role is somewhat significant in that. Take a break. Sometimes I move apart and beat my head with a stick because it's been pretty tedious. But anyway, I'll, I can talk a little bit about housing. Recent building permits. We got up to eight units, residential units this year. And that's the most we've had since, I believe, 2007. Tim?
I'm sure you checked closer.
Eight units. And I actually expect to get one or two more by the end of the year. If you figure an average household size of two-point-seven, we will reach our population goal of five thousand in seventy-one-point-eight years. We had some challenges. Just tracking development is a long time. And I've thought about this. For a small community, a developer wants a quick return on the money. And we tend to develop slowly. And we also have a lack of building lots right now. And Billy will help for that. I think you're down to what, two unless you?
Yeah, we don't need any more than a soul.
Yeah, I think there's two available, Billy. Peters Estates, twelve, Smoky Valley, four people, three or four. And I think one will be starting this year, perhaps, that's not included in the eight. Emerald Lake probably has five or six. I can't say if any of those are for sale, but there are, there are lots, a few lots. And though they're for four years, you'll remember. Back in the nineties, there are a lot of them. There were a lot of them. Times have changed. I mean, it's incredibly expensive to build a house and things. And infrastructure is not cheap at all. For example, if you had a hypothetical thirteen-acre tract of land that you could subdivide into thirty-one lots, hypothetical. It's actually one of the areas that we've looked at in the past. Just to build the streets and sewer would be over a half a million dollars. Had a conversation with Bill last week. Contrary to what some people believe, we will provide bond financing for streets and sewer. Right?
Correct.
It is in our policy.
That's correct.
As long as state statute allows. And it does. But still, you know, half a million dollars, that would run about per parcel. That's twenty-seven hundred dollars in special to you. So if you are a developer and you don't sell that lot, you're writing a check of twenty-seven hundred dollars for every one of those vacant lots for entered. So it's, it's a risk, truly a risk. We got to figure something out, though. The RHID idea is probably not a bad idea. We talked extensively about that last year. But that was a quick development. Twenty-four units would get built. It would, they would be on the tax rolls and that money then would be diverted back into infrastructure. That won't work in our residential, single-family development. We have to be able to look at specials. We have to be able to broadcast the fact that they're available to a developer. Most importantly, we need to identify some land and get somebody to... Other things, you know, if you're playing the zone, we're looking at accessory dwelling units, ADUs. You'll see that, term renews, dun-dun-dun. That's a granny flat or it's a rental unit in the back half of a, of a big lot or a deep lot.
Did you say granny flat?
Granny flat.
Granny flat?
Menlo's College.
Or a long flat?
Something like that?
I don't know. I think the challenge there is, I don't know if people will take advantage. There are two in town. You probably just think of one or two. It's a rental unit in the backyard, basically.
Does it include a tiny home?
It, well, it depends. It could. I, I would hope that we will be looking at a minimum house size of some kind. I, I actually, I walked through a house, and this is on the normal parcel, last week, two-hundred-and-eighty square feet. I couldn't believe it. It's tiny. And it sat on a full, basically, full building. ADUs, I think, could be a good idea. I mean, we're looking, if, if it's just the original town... Um, ADUs, I think, could be a good idea. I mean, we're looking, if, if it's just the original townsite, the core area, we've got sixty-five acres of desirable ground. While, you know, all the infrastructure is there. We don't have to spend half a million dollars on streets and sewers. It's not a bad idea. It won't solve the problem.
Eighty-five units, you think, are ready to be developed?
No, sixty-five acres in that area.
Okay.
That's about two-hundred-and-fifty parcels.
Okay.
Now, you're not gonna see an accessory dwelling unit on each parcel.
Right.
On all. But certainly, there's an opportunity to build a rental base that we don't have. Anyway, any questions? Anything I wanted to say?
Did, did those building permits that came in the eight, does that include then the first duplex that's being built?
It's a duplex and triplex, so it's not eight certain buildings, but out of there, it's a unit. Unit, a unit counts.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Administration of Finance, is that Larry or Kerry?
If he needs to learn.
If he needs to learn.
First, something real quick from the housekeeping standpoint. With the adoption of the 2017 budget, I need for each one of you to sign, there's two copies of the budget certificate. This is required as part of what we submit to the county or the state for filing our 2017 budget.
Let's take a circle.
Inc. I also want to report that, uh, last meeting on August first approved, uh, REACH solutions for, uh, managed IT services, posting email and also, uh, data backup services. Our current provider is Next Tech. We still have two years left on that agreement and we can't, the only way we can get out of it is pay the balance in two years. So, um, but they have a thirty-day notification that they can discontinue service to us without any recourse, because we never pay the four-hundred percent of the balance that would be outstanding for two years.
You're paying for them. Uh, that's a good deal to them.
Yes, it is. So we will be, for our hosted email and also, uh, backup services, we will finish the term of our agreement with Next Tech. Uh, last item is Wednesday of this week. Larry and I will, and our, uh, financial advisor will be having, on a conference call with Moody's Investor Service, um, with the issuance of, of the refunding and the general improvement for, uh, storm rage. Uh, we will be, uh, con, or visiting Moody's to get our bond rated. Um, you know, some of the items that they will talk about are, uh, tax-based economy, uh, trying to find out the general environment, commercial, industrial and residential development along with the top taxpayers or employers within the community and any, either positive or negative issues that could impact the ability to pay in the future. Um, also the change in preliminary values for, thank you, first tax valuation for the 2017 budget. From a finance standpoint, they want to talk about utility reserves and how that can be used on general funds. Um, any policies we have in place, we do have a fund balance and reserve policy. I will review the sixteen, 2016 budget and where we are. Um, also the debt service, uh, balance, whether we're in surplus or deficit. You'll also have some, some general questions, but to kind of give you a background, uh, in 2014, issued, uh, two-point-six million dollars of general obligation debt, uh, for, uh, public building bonds. In the summary of, of Moody's report, and we were rated an A2, which is an investment grade bond rating, uh, one of the questions that we asked after we received the rating is, how could we give it out? Because it's not the top rating you can get. And really, the response we received was, well, you just gotta get bigger. He said, for, he goes, for the size of the community you are, you're not gonna get a higher rating than what we gave you. But the summaries of, what they call the summary ratings rationale, talks about the, uh, the strengths and the challenges of, of that particular bond issue and rating. And for the strength, um, said healthy reserves relative to modestly sized operating budget. Above-average resident, uh, income indices, uh, small but stable regional economic center. The challenges that, uh, they identified were not only small general fund reserve balances, uh, above-average debt burden were about eighteen percent right now, Larry, you have, of assessed valuation. Statutorily, you could go to thirty percent. Relatively smaller tax base compared to similar rated entities. Um, basically size, population, that type of thing. You know, I, we haven't done the analysis in a few years, but I know several years ago when I looked at this, about forty percent of the property within this community is not on the tax rolls. Has a pretty dramatic impact on, on, uh, budget.
What was the percentage?
Around forty percent.
Are not on the tax rolls?
We would be, well, right now for the 2017 budget, we're about twenty-three million dollars. We would be well over forty million dollars. And when I say all the property, I'm talking city property, I mean, non-property. We would be well over forty million dollars. Um, but that's, uh, is not on, so, you know, we work with, with all we, all we have. And then the dependence on economically sensitive revenues and that is, what they're referring to there is sales tax. It's about thirty million, well, it's dropped on an average. It's about thirty-seven percent of our total general fund revenue. And so, there's some of the things that they'll be looking at during that, that call. They always throw something at you out of the blue, but, uh, we're keeping up with the, the information so that we're prepared for that, that call. And it also relates, brings me to another issue that we're also looking at rural development for the loan on the US5. And I have a question to, to put out to all of you. Is that the, the bid opening is August twenty-sixth. The next council meeting will be September sixth. Do you want to have a special meeting to award the bid on that building? Or you do want, or that project, or do you want to wait till September sixth?
Would you resent?
Chief?
Well, we'd like to get started on it right away, so it'd be nice to have a special council meeting, but I'm not gonna say it's required.
Well, maybe in a few days because, uh, one, well, the bid, they tabulated, they also have to verify that, that all the bid bonds are sufficient and meet the requirement, when I say they, as part of the architect's responsibility as a contract administrator. So they need a few days to follow up and compile some of that, but.
Based on history of both the rural wire and the architect, uh, sounds like the sixth would work fine. That takes them forever, you know? I mean, I'm looking, you know, that's a Friday bid, opening probably one, ten o'clock?
No, it's two or two-thirty.
Two, two-thirty, so then you're into the next week, twenty-nine, thirty, thirty-one. Um, you prove it there, give it to them. Monday's a holiday, Tuesday's the regular council. I'm not sure losing a week on the project is gonna set you back with six months has it done to you already. So, that's my thought. And I'm okay with that.
Okay.
I think we'll go with the sixth. Is everybody's in, alright with that?
The conflict on the sixth will have nothing to do with the.
So you'll, you'll be at council on the sixth?
For those of you that are wondering what the conflict is, it will be one of the two going volleyball games that they had this year at Smoky Valley and it'll be Pakistan's night where a few businesses are paying the tickets for the entire community coming to the volleyball match. I may not. What's that? Again. I'll have two tickets, so it's not a big deal. So I guess I don't have anything else unless somebody asks questions, I'll be.
Any questions for Greg? Gary, no, I'll go to others. Call for others? Call for others? Cory?
A couple. Uh, one, in the budget, we approved, uh, financing for the golf course. I had a few people ask me, so what's the future of the golf course? Is it gonna remain open? And I think the answer on the budget is probably confirmed that the golf course will be open for business for another year. Correct assumption, yes. Second, what's that? Yes, actually. The other, uh, subject is, I, we've had some conversation, uh, Mayor, but, uh, I think me and all, all of you other council members have, uh, received concern about the lack of handicap parking in the downtown area. And, um, I just wanna confirm that we're looking into that to see if there's any way to improve that if possible.
Answer is, uh, yes Cory, that, that has been brought forward. Uh, Greg and I, Next Tech, we'll be looking into recommendation possibilities to, to bring back action, would take, would need to be taken by council at some point in the future to make that happen. But we may, the goal is to come back with some potential areas where we could add, you know, one or two or whatever it is. And where they are close to approximate ramps and things that are already there to, you know, one concerned bid lock, if you do it, if you get the correct eighty-eight and all that, you're not just taking one, two, you're forced all down and that kind of thing. So try and work with, and space that's already close to ramps that we have. So, thank you for bringing that forward.
Thank you.
Any others that want to be brought forward at this time? Motion to adjourn? Second? The second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Thank you all.